We're gonna start. Call to orders.
It's a long run over here, man.
Two thousand twenty Springbrough Board of Education.
Anderson, Baugh, Stupi, Palaj, Good.
Here.
Item one, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one point two, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Sir. Any discussion or questions?
Anderson, Baugh, Stupi, Palaj, Good.
Yes.
Item one point three, approval of the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Anderson, Baugh, Stupi, Palaj, Good.
Yes.
Okay, item two, item two point one, recognition of Ohio School Public Relations Association's best of the best permanent education award.
Thank you, Mr. Palaj, members of the board. Before I introduce our distinguished guest here tonight, I just want to also throw my congratulations over to Scott Marshall, our communications coordinator, because besides that, we also won four awards from the Ohio School Public Relations Association. Two of the four were best of the best as well in both relations and marketing plan, plan and the e-news level for the state of Ohio. Now, the best of the best is like first place out of three, over three hundred entries. So, congratulations, Mr. Marshall, super job. And then it's really neat when we have an opportunity to speak about somebody in our community who's done such a fantastic job for our schools. And the Ohio High School Public Relations Association annually sponsors this award. And it's basically for those people that are unofficially, are not a part of the school. It has to be a community member, a parent, somebody outside of the school system who shares the mission of supporting all of our public schools. And Springbrough Schools was, are announced, we were contacted by the Ohio School Public Relations Association, the best of the best friends of education award to, is Carrie Robbins, our own co-host at Springbrough, four five zero six six. It's a local television show that everybody here knows about. We're very grateful for Mrs. Robbins' support of Springbrough Schools and her continued efforts to help promote positive stories of our great district. And so she's number one in the state of Ohio. And so we're very happy to see her.
Thank you very much.
We're very excited.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege to get to do this for the district where I graduated from and I spent my K through twelve years. And I obviously wouldn't be able to do this without Mayor Eganbro and Joe McKenzie, who is our videographer, producer and editor. And they are really truly the backbone and the heart of four five oh six six. And I wouldn't be able to do it also without Springbrough Schools and Scott Marshall. You know, without the wonderful content and the access that's provided to us, we wouldn't have the stories to put out there. So, thank you very much and congratulations, Scott Marshall, on all the wins. Holy cow, great job. But thank you so much. This means a lot.
You love that. Can you get a picture or something?
Yeah, we'll get a photo. Carrie, if you want to go behind the board, we can set you guys up.
Okay. Am I allowed to walk this way? Okay. I don't want to break any protocols here.
If you guys want, you can probably come up in the center somewhat spaced around. There's just a couple of, somewhat spaced. Why don't you get one shot?
You ready? All right, here we go. I think you. Just making sure I got seven.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Feel free to stick around.
Did I say if you're not offended, hey, why can't they go home and get their PJs on?
All right, item two point two, the Springbrough Education Association reports. Okay, item two point three, the Springbrough Classified Reports Association report. Do we have anybody here with CPA? Item two point four, public participation prearranged. Do not have anybody that has requested to speak. So, item two point five, do we have anybody here for public participation? So, we can then move into work session. And I believe the first item is yours, Mr. Marshall. Item three point two, on the board meeting takes.
Yes, and your packets there, your board docs, have the meeting calendar for two thousand and twenty one. In large, it's not a hundred percent accurate to say that everyone is the second and the fourth place they could take a shot off. Tried to adjust it on a couple of places. The June meeting, we needed to move the second one to a Monday for our Flier forecast. And our interview, rather. Typically, the squared ones are by business meetings moving out to work session to be the one through the circle. So, pretty similar to what I could see from this past year.
So, is the organizational meeting, I know that's the next item. This is the twelfth, but it's not on that. Do we have?
Be the first.
So, do we have a meeting on the sixth? Then that would make sense, right? Because this calendar should have been, it actually says January sixth, organization meeting.
That's this, Mr. Marshall.
Am I looking at the?
Yes, this is.
I thought I clicked on one that says two thousand and twenty one meeting calendar. It says on item three point three, the public content. It says two thousand and twenty one, and it just said it has the sixth.
Oh, that's, that's the twenty, that's two thousand and twenty two.
Because you have to announce it this year for the two thousand and twenty two. So, you look at item three.
Oh, got it. It's the two thousand and twenty two. I'm sorry.
Alumni year versus school year, it was.
No, I mean, that is, it truly is the two thousand and twenty two meeting. Got it. Okay, I'm sorry. So, the sixth, the organization meeting. Got it. Sorry about that. I didn't mention that it was two thousand and twenty two.
There way good.
Yeah. Other questions on that? We already covered item three point three. That's the two thousand and twenty two organization meeting. Got it. So, the committee reports. Start with Mr. Marshall, District Mayor Council.
Mr. President, members of the board. We had our second District Mayor Council meeting, top of the month here. Carrie spoke about the Flier forecast. I kind of went into details about that and shared the same presentation that we shared here. Mr. Hope also talked about calamity data, which is kind of the district's plan. And this followed up with communication that we had sent out to families, talked about the letter and the votes listed on the web page as well. We also talked about the request to change model form and how that would be coming. That's obviously in the past, the deadline was today for that. And then just some general questions for the board members, mostly about quarantines and just the exposure letters that were answered. We had one that was a curriculum question that's followed up by a statement. Our next meeting, so there's no January meeting, our next meeting scheduled for early February. Thank you.
Stacy, Budget and Finance.
Yes, budget and finance will need virgin on November twentieth. And we went over several things. We discussed the Flier forecast that I had shared with the board in our co-signing. You guys have printed that. We also went over current and projected cash flows. We discussed the implications if our turnover update comes in higher than what the forecast currently is, if it comes in at fifteen percent, what that would mean for the district, which I've also shared with the board. We also discussed, like I did with the board as well, what our financial outlook would have looked like if we would have not reduced that levy back in two thousand and thirteen. And then we also discussed the update meeting that we had with facilities and the financial task force. And so far, we don't have a meeting scheduled yet for January because we're kind of waiting. All of the committees have to work with each other to make sure we don't duplicate days and just try to organize when the meeting's going to be. They'll still be on a Friday, and then hopefully we'll have additional members. Looks like we've been getting lots of feedback from people wanting to be on the committee. So, I'll post those minutes out on our website.
I know safety committee met yesterday. I don't know if we want to cover that, Rob?
I'm gonna.
It's not listed, or do you want to do that the next?
Yeah.
Meeting?
At the next one.
We'll do it at the next one?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still working on some stuff, so.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, anything else for item four? Okay, three point five, discussion of other businesses required. Have anything? To your section, Stacy.
And the first item I have is the November two thousand and twenty financials. Starting in November through mid-February, we'll start to have a drastic reduction in our revenue because we're not receiving any tax advances. And so we received just under two million dollars in revenues from the general fund in the month of November, but we have four point five million dollars worth of expenses. So, obviously, we'll be tapping into our cash balance. So, even though our cash balance was healthy through October, we'll be dipping into those reserves until we start receiving tax advances again in February. So, I'm expecting probably about four and a half million in expenses through December and then into January. January, that'll be a little bit higher due to the HSA deposits for January. We also had some debt payments in November out of the general fund. We did receive the refund from our visa mitigation grant that we had applied for. We had purchased those buses and then did reamars us. We did receive that in the month of November. And when we closed November, we had just under eighty-five days of cash on hand. We also have received in about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total care money that we are missing on spending the last few items. All of that money has to be spent and reported by December thirtieth. So, that is the financials. They're all out there and posed some new questions, just you know, me or everybody know. The next item I have is item four point two, and then we'll go on these two separately. I wanted to explain to you before I just asked for approval for this, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from two athletics. The wording says up to one hundred and fifty thousand. And I just wanted to be clear on what this was for. Due to COVID, they had had a capacity restriction of fifteen percent for athletic sporting events. So, this, this calls about a seventy percent reduction in revenue for the athletic department. The gate receipts that they receive from athletic events, covers referees, game owners, stuff like field striking, footballs, tennis balls, reconditioning of equipment. And with the seventy percent reduction in revenue, they still have a lot of those same expenses that they're unavoidable costs. We have to provide game owners and referees and that sort of thing. So, what we, what we're asking is, in the event that there is a shortfall and we're not able to close a month of athletics, we have to be able to close in black. So, before I close each month, I'll be looking at the expenses and revenues to see if there's enough money in the cash balance. When we get to the end of the school year, even if we haven't had a made to make a transfer yet, we also have to make sure that they have a sufficient cash balance at the end of June because they will go for a considerable amount of time before they start receiving gate receipts in the fall, and they have a lot of expenses to prepare for the upcoming seasons. So, we've been very stringent on, you know, giving any money, trying to make it work and trying to reduce expenses as much as possible. But in the event that they do have a shortfall, we will have up to one hundred and fifty thousand that we can transfer immediately. So, I just wanted to be clear on what that transfer was for and why, why I'm asking for it now, just in the event, I'm not going to try to put the money in there, which is in the event that I have to transfer back.
Can we do the motion approval? And if there's any questions? Question or discussion? So, item four point three seeks the approval of four point one through four point two. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Discussion or questions?
So, just to confirm, it is very typical every year with how we do athletics, there's always money that goes from our general fund into our athletics just because we, with what we charge to pay to participate, it's not going to, it's not a fully funded, our athletics are not self-funded. So, this is not a new thing. This is just your concern that we might need to do a little bit more because of COVID.
Right, we don't have to make a transfer anymore because if you remember back in seventeen, we stopped taking the athletic supplemental out of the athletic fund.
I'm thinking reverse, okay.
And, but yes, but yes, you are correct that we do have expenses that are paid for out of the general fund for athletics as all school districts are because unless you're in college, it's impossible to spend, to raise that kind of money annually to make it self-funded. So, yes, and we just don't do the transfer anymore because we get to pay general fund.
Yeah, and that's the way, but it's typical that we always have some general funds. This is not a new thing that we're prioritizing athletics over something. It's just that what money typically goes in there, we're concerned there might need to be some additional funds because we can't have people coming to the games and there's a variety of things that COVID expenses.
Right.
This is not a new thing for us.
Right, we just have a reduction in revenue due to COVID.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Anderson, Baugh.
Yes.
Stupi.
Spain.
Palaj.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
I just have to go to items.
Yep.
Approval of a donation of two hundred dollars from the Veterans of Forum Wars of Ohio charities to be used at Dennis Elementary for student assistance. Four point five, approval of a donation of indoor recess gifts for Dennis Elementary valued at six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy one cents. There's a long list, so we keep this out there, but it'll be in the minutes, but I don't want to be involved. Item four point six, approval of a donation of nine hundred and eighty-five dollars from P and G to be used towards the robotics program. And last, approval of a donation of five violins, two violas, three cellos valued at three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Springbrough Orchestra Association to be used by the Springbrough Orchestra Center. And I did add that late because they just sent it to me yesterday, so I apologize for that.
So, item four point eight, seeking the approval of four point four through four point seven. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I just have a comment on approving like the five violins and everything. I think our music department has been so creative and innovative through all of this, through like the teacher at SI did a GoFundMe to help with, what was it that she was?
Ukuleles.
Ukuleles, yeah, so the kids can have a, still have an experience that is more typical. It's just there's the neat thing in here with all these donations here. I think it's amazing how they still figured out how to do performances so their kids can experience that. So, I just appreciate all the different creativity to still have a strong music program.
Any other discussion or question?
Anderson.
Yes.
Baugh.
Yes.
Stupi.
Yes.
Palaj.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hope, to your section.
Item five point one, I need approval, seeking approval on a separate reading of board policies that were presented in the last board meeting. And item five point two is the calendar for the twenty one twenty two school year. I do want to make one quick mention on the calendar. This is the accurate one. It's in there. There is a difference. There's about a month difference, and then Lisa brought this up. The principal brought to us wanting to have a gap in between the very first evening conferences, about a month to the full day ones, so that they could capture kids that were struggling and give parents potentially into a second conference. So, it is accurate in there, and so I need approval for that one as well.
So, item five point three is looking for the approval of items five point one and five point two. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Discussion or questions?
So, to clarify, this, I did notice there was a difference. So, this looks like our current fall calendar because they want the separation even though it's not COVID. Gotcha, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Anderson, Baugh.
Yes.
Stupi.
Yes.
Palaj.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I present to you personnel report for December. Item six point one. And also six point two, some exciting news. We are asking for you all to agree to raise the subrate from ninety dollars to a hundred, which we've already publicized, and we've had about twelve inquiries about coming on this, three to four that we're actually processing. So, that's a good thing.
Okay, so six point three is looking for the approval of six point one and six point two. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
I'll sign it.
Discussion or questions? Notice we had a couple relegations on the bus drivers. Are we doing?
So, I don't know if you all knew, a neat thing happened here recently. We had, Rob, five or six Centerville drivers that had come over to drive for us because Centerville is fully devoted. So, they put their drivers on a grid status of furlough. And so we gladly welcomed them. Now, a couple have gone back because they're starting to get things rerolled over in Centerville. But, so we've been able to do good with what we have. We knew about these two resignations that were coming. Taya, she was homeless after another driver that had had surgery, but Tim, we knew he was going to resign. So, we're just going to be limping along once we get back from the holidays.
I saw those, I was just curious as to how we were getting hold on numbers. But I hadn't realized what the sign was, so that's.
Yeah, that was a good thing.
I stepped a little bit. Discussion or questions?
Anderson.
Yes.
Baugh.
Yes.
Stupi.
Yes.
Palaj.
Yes.
Good.
And then item six point four is the athletic report for December.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Anderson.
Yes.
Baugh.
Yes.
Stupi. Palaj.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, who wants to speak, item seven point one, is that you?
Sure, I can.
Okay.
We are seeking for the board to endorse my passing the resolution, the Fair School Funding Plan. It did pass in the House, we eighty-seven to nine, and now it's to the Senate. I think this will be actually very timely because what we've heard is that the Senate is trying to slow roll it and not do anything with it until after the first of the year. So, by hopefully flooding the legislative people with all the resolutions from the board and urge them to make a decision before December thirty-first, even if they do accept this new funding plan, we still have the challenge, the uphill challenge of how they're going to pay for it, which will be really addressed until the spring. But this is actually the first, I did send you guys some literature and I did a one-pager for you just to kind of give you the major points of it, but this will be the first constitutional funding plan since the Duroff decision that we were unconstitutional back in nineteen ninety-seven. So, by passing this resolution, it'll just show our district's support in working towards a funding plan that is actually adequate and equitable.
Is there a motion to approve item seven point one?
Seven.
Possibly.
Discussion, comments, question?
Are they asking for the board to be any other, like, are there phone calls? What would be helpful, or is the resolution, they just want it to go with that one direction? What other advocacy should we do?
Basically, I could absolutely send you all the contact information. Well, they've given us three things, the resolution, they've also given a letter that should be signed by the Secret Hidden Treasure, and then also a press release that Scott and the Altona Tweet can send out showing our support, but obviously any additional.
I thought there was something I saw from OSBA.
There's something else that they're doing.
Something to talk about.
We were also another thing that they were urging boards to reach out about a resolution to support or to try to ask for them not to support, I believe, Senate Bill eighty-nine. And it's where property tax, if we want to go to Board of Revisions and file an account of complaint or counter complaint, it would have to come to the Board of Education first. And they're, they're saying not to support that because you have such a small window to file a complaint. I believe it's April, sometime in April, that you have to file a complaint, and it would be hard for districts to go to their board, get the right approvals, get those things filed. Then when a counter complaint comes, you have to take it back to the board. And so, in our case, and in most of the district, I've never met a district yet or a person at a district yet that has filed revision complaints about homeowners. It's typical to do that for a business because a lot of times if somebody purchases a business, they try to get the value way down and don't say no will and all kinds of things. So, it is typical for us to file a complaint on those sales, but it's not typical before if a homeowner goes to the Board of Revisions and files a complaint saying, I paid less for my house, it's not worth what you guys have it valued at, we're not gonna, we're not gonna file a counter complaint. It's basically, you know, so we, they, they were urging school districts to not support that Senate Bill eighty-nine. But as far as House Bill three oh five, which is now Senate Bill three seventy-six, they, the things that they've given us to ask us to do, those are things that I've seen. And then I would.
We got something designed on the seventh from OSBA. I can forward it back out. It just tells you the senators to reach out to the staff.
This happened?
Yeah, on Senate.
And this was?
It's Senate Bill three seventy-six, Fair School Funding Plan, urge the Senate to pass this bill. Came from Jennifer Hope, OSBA, on the seventh. You don't have it.
It's the current Senate.
It just gives you the contact information, some talking points.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it was the Senate President, Finance Committee Chair, President-elect of the Senate. And in addition to talking to our senators. Any other discussion or questions?
Anderson.
Yes.
Baugh.
Yes.
Stupi.
Yes.
Palaj.
Yes.
Good.
All right, move to item seven point two. Board member comments. It's Baugh.
Sure. One is, people, we all were invited through emails to participate in a couple of things. One was with Lakota. They did a diversity of community conversation, and it was exciting. There was, they're a bigger district. There was like fifty people on the Zoom, but they had it facilitated, and it was just really interesting to hear a neighboring district, and there was a couple of districts that joined like what I did, just to hear what was happening there and to see what they're doing. And they had students, like when we went into breakout rooms, they had a student who was, happened to be in one of my breakout rooms. And it was just exciting to see students own some of this and to hear their perspectives and things that weren't going great, but also things that they know are, they're working to address. So, it's exciting that we're at that point of having these conversations and just the stuff I heard there, I'm, there's going to be a lot that we're going to hear the same thing here. So, it was just a really interesting outside perspective to see how they had their conversation. And then West Carrollton had reached out about, I think, I don't know if any of you have attended these at OSBA, but having student board reps. I had attended, I think it was at NSBA, that I had attended a couple of things. And I know right now with COVID, it's not the time to bring a new initiative, but I think it's definitely something to consider. It was interesting, West Carrollton, Centerville, Northmont all have student board reps. You think they're eleven? You think they're elected in different ways, some by the board, some by students. And Kettering and, Kettering's for grownups too, that were there like with the visitor districts just to kind of learn. So it's something I think, once we get through the epidemic, I think it would be nice to consider again, to hear, they're not, they vote, but their vote doesn't truly get calculated to pass something, but to have, they're part of all work sessions and the business sessions, and just to hear their perspective and initiatives that they've taken on and how it's different than the student government or student council and stuff. So I appreciate neighboring districts being welcoming to, for us to learn from each other. And that's one of the things the board members were talking about is just, you know, it's great to learn from somebody else who's at different points and is wearing different things, so, something for the future. The last thing is, just, I've been getting feedback from different buildings that are having, our community is coming alongside and supporting our teachers and staff and bus drivers, central office in amazing ways. It's just neat to see, it's what Springboro does. It's way more in a time of crisis, that's usually something that unites us. And I just appreciate all of these civic groups, the city, the township, churches, Girl Scout groups, all kinds of stuff that are working alongside the PTOs to make sure that our staff are feeling nurtured through such a difficult period, day in, day out. So that was all that I had. Anderson?
Nothing except the, I noticed all those lists of all the people that give 14 dollars, 10 dollars, 8 dollars, 9 dollars. By itself, it looks like, well, why would anybody just give 5 dollars? Sure. But you all know this more than I do, but the parents do a lot, I mean, on their own, with their children and their class, supporting different fundraising things, so, I don't know, it's kind of neat to see that they keep on giving when asked. That's all.
Wanted to thank Carrie again, and just one of my ex-students from a few years back. But, and she's done a lot for the community, and not only with the, with the TV show, but other things. Thanks for all the donations that we got, and wish everybody up here happy holidays, and hopefully it's a safe one.
Yeah, congratulations to the districts again for your, Mr. Marshall and Carrie as well. And thank you for the donations, you know, I think it probably is a good place to, for us to reminisce a little bit about where we were about six to seven months ago when we were meeting in the high school theater room or, you know, auditorium deciding what we were going to do this year. You know, here we are, really at the midpoint of the year, and we're one of the few districts that really saw it through from a in-person education, you know, option for families and students. And I think, you know, really about saying that as a community, we've really done an exceptional job. The survey that you sent, some, I think it was countywide data or maybe even statewide data, but, you know, it showed that Springboro was one of the lower districts in terms of infection rates and things like that. Again, I don't think we could have done it without the families, the faculty, staff, administration, like Ms. Babb said, the community. I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing that we essentially had a fairly normal school year, especially considering some of our neighboring districts, starting and stopping, you know, the bumps in the road that they had. So congratulations to everybody, and, you know, hopefully we'll continue on into January. But so far, congratulations, that was a big acknowledgement, so, well done.
Go ahead and knock up boogers.
Yeah, probably set us up for.
Jinx us, but no, I wouldn't echo that, I was going to say something similar, just about, you know, all the hard work that's gone in to make this first semester successful and for, you know, even the remote days that we had coming out of the Thanksgiving break. A lot of good feedback, but I heard it in my, it's a good experience, and I heard a lot of positive things as well from, from folks. Just a testament to our staff and our teachers, which is what they, the work that they put in to make this successful to this point. So I would also extend my, my thanks, and, you know, thank you again, yeah, to all of the people that donated. And it's great to see the support from the community, and love to see sort of the parents coming together to, you know, indoor recess gifts at Dennis, that's great. It's really great to see the school community come together to meet some of those needs, so thank you again. And, yeah, lastly, congratulations to Mr. Marshall, thank you for all your work, Ms. Robbins, who isn't here anymore, but very well deserved, so congratulations. Anything else, Mr. Hope, Ms. Floyd? Okay, then we will move to item eight point one, executive session, considering the compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to approve?
I know.
Discussion. Just a reminder, everything discussed in executive session should remain confidential.
Anderson? Stewie? Palachi?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes, there will be no action following executive session.